One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I get a motion to consider an act upon the minutes of November 9th and November 21st, 2022?
So moved. Hello, everybody.
Hi, Tom. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Okay. I just want to announce for the meeting that Selectwoman Lefkowitz has a business conflict and is unable to attend today's meeting. Okay. And our first item, I was going to require a little bit of me making a phone call on my cellphone to Mr. Dolling, which I'm actually very excited about. So I think I'm going to call him first, Anthony, and then let you, although, you know, he's...
Hold on, Brenda.
Okay. All right. Let me...
Brenda, if you want to put it on speaker and put it into the microphone...
Yes. This one?
Well, the one that's on the phone.
This one?
Yeah, but you don't need to move it.
He's head. I'm with you.
Put it on the speaker. We can hear you. End up...
Well, maybe I should have you talk first because Ken usually, you know, he has to overhearing me and then when I talk to him and he goes...
Yeah, I could present it in...
Yeah, why don't you go first?
All right. So Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks and Recreation. I've got Brian Nero, Parks and Recreation Commission Chairman, with me as well. About two months ago, the Parks and Rec Commission had gotten a few emails from some residents looking to honor Mr. Ken Dolling by naming the Sherman Green gazebo after him. Back in 1985, Ken really was the driving force behind getting the gazebo on the Sherman Green. He had seen it down in New Jersey, a similar type of gazebo, thought it would be such a great, you know, facility here in Fairfield, do all the concerts on Sherman Green for the community, which we've continued to do and Ken scheduled all those for us for roughly 30 years before my office took it over and Ken retired from it. But it's still one of those things where we offer 36 concerts a year, free concerts on the Sherman Green. And Commission passed this unanimously, hoping to name the Sherman gazebo after Ken Dolling.
That's nice. We have the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. Do you want to say anything? Brian?
I guess all I can say is, Ken, you have big shoes to follow and, you know, congratulations on this honor. And I guess I have some work to do if I want to get my name up there in a few years.
Well, you do. All right. So I am going to call Ken. I would just like to say I'm very, was very happy to request this of the Commission and have the support of the community. Obviously, Mr. Dolling's contributions to our town are extraordinary and he is one of my all-time favorites. He is someone whom I'm very close to and I absolutely adore. And doing this on behalf of somebody who has given so much to our community is just one of those fun things about being first selectwoman. And so I'm going to call Ken now. Okay. And I see that his son, Grant, is on the line. I'm going to ask for public comment after we get Ken on, who's a former Fairfield police, was formerly with.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dolling. How are you? Listen, I just want to tell you, you're on speakerphone and we're in a room full of a lot of people right now.
Yeah, I have speaker.
Yes. So we just did the motion. Well, I didn't actually do the motion yet, did I?
No, not yet.
No. Anthony Calabrese from the Parks and Rec Department just said some very nice things about you. And we were talking about, I'm about to make a motion to have the Sherman Green gazebo named Ken Dolling gazebo at the Sherman Green. So what do you think about that?
I love it. I love it. You made my day. You're the best.
All right. So I'm going to make the motion. I am asked for a motion to hear and consider an act upon recommendation from the Parks and Rec Commission to rename the Sherman Green gazebo to the Kenneth Dolling gazebo at the Sherman Green.
Sounds good.
So moved.
Sounds good.
Okay. So we just have a motion, Ken, in a second. I am going to open it up to the board for any comment. Mr. Flynn?
All right. Yep?
Yep. First of all, Mr. Dolling, congratulations and thank you for your years and years and years of service to the town. One of the most gratifying things about being involved in town government is the fact that although Mr. Dolling is unique, we've had so many unique individuals that I've been able to run across through the course of my service with the town that give back selflessly. And it's really nice to be able to recognize another one of those people now. And I thank you for all your hard work and your efforts through the years on behalf of all the citizens of Fairfield and the kids who've enjoyed many events at the gazebo through the years. So thank you, and this is well-deserved.
I enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you, Tom. I am going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone either on the WebEx or in the room who would like to make any comments about this motion? Grant, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, Brenda, can you hear me, Brenda?
I can. Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. Hold on. Your father just hung up. Hold on, Grant.
I'm sure I missed your call, please. Leave your telephone number.
I think, I hope he didn't get disconnected.
I think he knew the way the vote was going to go, so...
Well, now I'm getting voicemails, so maybe he'll call me back, hopefully. All right, Grant, go ahead. I'll send him the link or send it to you and you can share it with him from the meeting.
All right. I want to thank you, Brenda, and all the selectmen and everyone involved getting this done. And I know one of my good friends, Joe Reynes, had brought us the attention of somebody and somehow we got where we are. And I just, I can't thank you enough. You know, my father's Mr. Fairfield and I'm in South Carolina now, but I did my 28 years and I love the town. It really means something to him and to me. It's a legacy forever, so thank you all.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you for your service to the town of Fairfield. Is there anyone in the audience here who would like to make any comments? No? All right. I'm going to try your dad one more time.
I'm sorry I missed your call.
It's voicemail. Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right. Well, again, I want to echo those comments and I want to thank the Parks and Rec Commission for taking this on. It really means a lot to Mr. Dolling and to our community. All right. There's no further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Congratulations. I wish your dad could have heard that.
All right. A month later.
Well, thank you all.
All right, Grant. Nice to see you.
Bye-bye.
All right. Take care. Okay. Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome. I can step out first.
No, you're fine. Item number five, we have, well, we have three appointments, but we'll take the first one. Can I get a motion to approve Don Lambert, French Street, to have his term from 11/22 to 11/27 for the Flood and Erosion Control Board? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion from the board on this item?
None for me.
And I believe Mr...
All those thanks to you for your...
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for your willingness to serve.
And Mr. Lamper, are you... Oh, hi. How are you? Nice to meet you. Do you want to offer any comments or anything? I mean, you don't have to, but I just would like to offer...
My second term is void.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
No. Well, thank you. I appreciate your willingness to serve. And obviously, this is an important board and it's becoming more and more important as the years go on regarding the flooding we're having all throughout the town. I mean, it's just, it's a big deal. And I appreciate you stepping up and to serve. It means a lot to the community. Is there any other additional comments from anyone in the public or on the WebEx? Seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. Our next item is to appoint Bruce Ryan, reappoint, sorry, Bruce Ryan to the Police and Fire Retirement Board. Actually, Bruce can't attend today because he has a conflict with work, but can I get a motion to approve this reappointment?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
And Brenda, just to be clear, these are appointments that have been gone over with the chairpeople of these committees. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, we always do that. Okay. So Bruce, actually, I serve on the Pension and Police Retirement Board as the first select person as well. And Bruce has always been a very helpful member, very good, has a lot of good experience and is, brings a lot to the board. And the chairwoman was very happy that he wanted to stay on. So he's not on, so if there's no further... Is there any public comment on this item? Bringing it back to the board. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And can I get a motion to approve reappointing our tree warden, which is a state statute, well, actually, yeah, it's our town charter, right? Our state statute has to be reappointed every year. Can I get a motion to approve our tree warden?
So moved.
Second. I'll open it up. Mr. Minder, would you care to say anything?
Thank you.
I would like to say that I think we have probably the best tree warden in the entire state. He's extraordinarily, he's extraordinarily helpful and knowledgeable and has been a great asset to me and to this entire town, especially when we had that big storm and we had to drive around together to survey all the trees down. You have to, you just push it once, Jeff. So, Mr. Minder?
Really quick, I'd just like to thank the board for the reappointment and the Town Forestry Committee also, who's all in attendance today. Thank you for your continued support throughout the years. You know, they do a lot for me. We're in contact every day. And also that the men and women, the guys and girls down at the DPW sometimes go unrecognized, but makes my job as a manager really that much easier having them there. So thank you.
Yeah, they are good.
Thank you.
They are good. And you've done an awesome job and to have the support of the Forestry Committee is really helpful as well. But thank you for sticking around with this place, with all of our trees.
Thank you. I think it's, I think this job, Jeff, is harder than people realize. I remember a few years ago when we had a significant storm and we had all the utility companies in from out of state. And I saw them all one night having dinner and I thanked them for coming to town. And I remember them saying they could not believe how heavily wooded Fairfield was. And, you know, to balance the community's love of the trees and what they bring to the community from an aesthetic standpoint with the safety concerns and the utility companies and what it does during these large storms, it's not an easy job and it can become very political at times. You get stuck in the middle of, you know, trying to make everybody happy. And I think, in all honesty, you've done it very well and it's much harder than people realize. So thank you for that. You know, I continue to wish you the best.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room? Chief?
At my expense, President and Fire Chief, but I also serve as Emergency Management Director for the town. Hi, I'm still Dennis McCarthy. I'm the Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director. And I just want to say that having a partnership with the DPW and in particular Jeff Minder following storms is so critical to the town's recovery. Police, Fire, and DPW respond to the response, in the response, but in the recovery, we lean on Jeff so much to get our relationship with UI and the other utilities corrected and to get the town cleaned up and open for, so we can get back into business. So I just wanted to compliment him for all of his contributions. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And Chief brings up a good point and so did Selectman Flynn. They don't, people don't realize the amount of work that Jeff is involved in, you know, sitting in those rooms at the Command Center during the storms with UI on the phone, dealing with all of this, all the work that's involved when there's an emergency like that. And we have people in our town who are relying on electricity, you know, who are on either oxygen or there's a whole host of things and it's a very tense situation. And to have Jeff's ability and his knowledge is really helpful and he's respected greatly by all organizations that work with him. So kudos to you, Jeff. We're lucky to have you. If there's no further discussion, Mary, did you want to say something?
Yeah, we sent an email, I don't know if you and Tom got to read it, from the Forestry Committee. And we get to work with Jeff, we meet monthly and then, and we get to, you know, talk to him individually. As he says, probably talk to at least one of us daily, maybe even on the weekend. And he's always so professional, so courteous. And it's not always an easy, as Tom pointed out, it can be very stressful. And he, his knowledge of arboriculture and the trees is really superb and he is renowned in the state. He is very well-respected, not just in Fairfield, but also, you know, when I am in meetings throughout the state on these things. We're fortunate to keep him because they all want him. So please reappoint him because we want him to stay in Fairfield. Thank you.
I didn't write, I didn't write any of this, I promise you.
Come on, Jeff, I have my notes right here you gave me. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. If there's no further comment, back to the board. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jeff. The next item is, may I have a motion to approve Stephen Collins to serve from 11/22 to 11/26? He's replacing Nathaniel Rex, who did not seek another term. Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second. Is there any discussion on the item? We do have Mr. Collins. Are you here? Oh, hi, Steve. How are you? Stephen is in the room. Do you have any comments, Tom?
No, just thank you for your willingness to serve.
Agreed. Do you want to offer anything? Sure.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve and I look forward to bringing some fresh input.
No, we appreciate it. We appreciate anybody who steps up to serve and it's a busy committee. They work with our law enforcement, our engineering department, DPW, me. So, you know, we all do a lot of work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from the public? Back to the board. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations. Our next item, can I get a motion to approve Theodore DeZane to serve from 11/22 to 11/26? This is filling a vacancy created by David Kanter, who moved to a full member. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Is there any comments from the board? Ted, are you here? Ted, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on the WebEx.
Oh, hi, Ted.
Yeah. Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm pleased, I was just going to say I'm pleased to get involved and looking forward to serving.
Thank you so much. Tom, do you have anything?
No, just thank you so much and best of luck.
Well, thank you for stepping up. This board, if I remember correctly, was created or started when Jill Kelly was on the Board of Selectmen, I think, actually, way back, when I first started getting involved in local government. And it was really quite a committee. They were, acquired a tremendous amount of property throughout the town through private donations and through operating budget input in the budget. So this is, this is something that I think is still very valuable because we have a lot of land, we don't have a whole lot of land and we need to start preserving it because it's getting developed a little bit too quickly.
Agreed.
Is there any comments from the public? Back to the board. All in favor? Thank you, Ted. Thanks for coming on the WebEx. The next item is just for information purposes only. It's a conservation appointment, which is just made by the first selectwoman. And I am appointing Theodore Lunzinger, who is going to serve out a term to fill the vacancy for Brian McCann, who became a full member. And this will run to 11/24. He'll serve as an alternate. The next item, can I get a motion to approve, to hear and consider and authorize a purchasing authority to enter into the proposed initial two-year lease, which is effective 1/123 through 12/31/24, entering into a three-one-year optional renewal periods, effective 1/125 and 1/31/28, with the Boost Sport Performance Academy to provide all labor, materials, equipment, and all necessary for the complete operation of sports performance and athletic services at the Park and Rec Center facility located at Old Dam Road, as detailed in the RFP and the agenda, for the pricing detailed in the Boost Sport Performance Academy proposal. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second. And we have Anthony to present. Thank you, Anthony.
Yep. Thank you, Brenda. Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks and Recreation. This building is the old Beanery Building, where our tennis center is on Old Dam Road, for those of you who are not familiar with it. Boost Sports Performance has been our tenant for the last five years. We entered into contract with them in 2018. They have been great tenants. We put this out to bid again. They were the only bidders on this for pretty much the identical amount of rent plus a little cola that they had included and still getting 20% of the program. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I would encourage you to approve this one. This is a good lease for us.
Thank you, Anthony.
Anthony, yeah, Anthony, two things. What does it mean 20% of the program? Just explain that to me so I make sure. I think I know, but I want to make sure.
Yeah. So any programs, training, all that kind of stuff that they do there, after their expenses, we get 20%. So it's 20% of the net, not 20% of the gross.
Has the town gotten anything on that?
We have. Actually, the five-year lease total for the last five years has brought us in close to $240,000.
Okay. What about, you said you put this out to bid, you only got one bidder. Is Gerald Foley around for that? Was he involved in that?
Yes. This all went through the purchasing department, was properly bid through all the same channels that we always bid. But yes, Gerald is in the audience. If you'd like to ask him a specific question, I could ask him to come up.
Dude, Gerald, I, here's, when I hear we only got one bid, my only concern, and I have no problem with Boost, my only concern was, was this a, was this a bid that was done fairly? You know, we didn't put, you know, something in this bid that says, you know, on Wednesdays you must have green hair and be six foot five in order to win this bid. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So this is Gerald Foley. Yeah. So this is actually the second time we put this out. So we had put it out, as Anthony alluded to, five years ago, we only got one submission at that point. When we put it out again, we tried to broaden the amount of people that we had participating and we still only got one.
Do you know why?
That I don't know. I, it's, I think it's somewhat of a niche in terms of, because what we're looking to do is someone to set up a program in the building. So I'm only guessing that there was just not, you know, perhaps, you know, there was not what we're looking for, but an interest in setting up a business in the building to do what this company is currently doing.
With that being the case, how do we set the market rate for this? How do we know we're getting a good? I just heard the 240, which sounds great, but how do we know we're getting a good deal here for the town?
Yes. So what they're doing right now is they're paying us $2,690 per month. So they're going to pay in addition to what Anthony alluded to. So we have the revenue. So they pay us $32,280 a year, plus they pay us 20% of the revenue for all the programs, the party rentals and their monthly memberships.
Right. And how do we, A, how do we know we're getting paid? And B, do we have any way to know that that's market rate? That's my question.
Well, I know we do get paid. They pay us monthly. They've been, as Anthony will attest to, this has been one of our better tenants. They pay on time. We don't have to chase them for the money. In regard to market rate, that I wouldn't know. I'd have, we'd probably have to get some, but I, actually, I wouldn't know if that's, it seems to be a fair amount, given the space and the fact that they're paying us, in addition to that rent, they're paying us also revenue. But I don't, I really have nothing to benchmark it against.
Can I chime in? If I could just chime in. So prior to 2018, this building was put up in 2014 and the Parks and Rec Department ran programming through there and we lost money every year. So when I became director in 2016, I said, we are going to lease this building out and see what we can get in there. And that was what we did. And now, as you heard, we're here, we're pulling in 30,000 plus in guaranteed rent plus that 20%. So for us, this was a no-brainer where, you know, we're now pulling in revenue as opposed to, you know, just being an expense on the town.
Yeah, no, that part I don't quibble with. What I just questioned is there's other gyms and organizations in town that pay rent to commercial property owners, right? And this one pays rent to the town, which is great and I'm happy to have them and I'm sure they pay on time and all that. I just don't know that it's market rate. That's the only thing. I want to make sure that we're not picking favorites, that they're paid market, that we're paid market rate and that we know we're getting the right amount. You know, do we review what they pay us? They tell us, hey, our revenue is this and therefore your, or not their revenue, but their income is this, so do they get, you know, do we ever look at to know or do we have the right to look at to know that they're calculating it right and paying us right?
Yes, yes, we absolutely have the right to look at their books. We do. We confirm that that 20% is what they're giving us and that's, you know, they file their taxes just like any other business. So as far as what we're collecting, that is absolutely the right amount. I would, my argument to the market rate would be, you know, we're publicly bidding this. If you get four or five people to bid on it, which we're not, I understand that, you know, that's what sets the market. So the fact that we have one-
But I'm surprised we're not. That's why I asked my first question is to, you know, was this RFP done in such a broad way that we didn't in any way, and please don't take this the wrong way, but in any way guarantee what the outcome was going to be? I want to make sure that it's an open and appropriate bidding process.
Yes, so in regard to the bidding process, what we did is we posted it on the town site. We posted on the State of Connecticut bid portal site and then we reached out to, I don't know the exact amount of companies, but I know we reached out to quite a few companies. I would say it's in the 20-plus company area and like I say, we only ended up with the one submission.
In my understanding, I mean, we follow the same process we always follow, Tom, and it's always fair and open and honest and transparent. And there are occasions when there is only one company that bids. And in the past, I know some departments have extended the life of purchasing to try to get more bids in and sometimes we just don't get them. So this was following all the process that us, and to me, this is a home run. We're actually making money when we were losing money in the past. I think you were on the Board of Finance when this change was made and it's, to me, it's a win for the town.
Sure. I just want to make sure it's the right level win for the town, that's all. Mr. Baldwin, did this, any problem with the lease or anything different on the lease on this or anything out of the ordinary?
Hi, Jim Baldwin here. No, nothing out of the ordinary. There are a couple of minor changes. No, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of another agreement that's on the agenda for today. No, there are no issues with this one.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your answer to my questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing not anyone on WebEx. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. I just want to thank Anthony and Gerald for their work on this and for getting us an extra 30 grand a year, which is nice. All right. All in favor? Aye. Tom?
I said aye.
Oh, good. All right. Thank you, thank you. I think some people want to scooch out. It's nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Of course. Okay, our next item is to hear and consider and authorize purchasing authority to extend the current agreement with We Care Denali to operate the town's leaf and yard waste facility as detailed in the bid number in the agenda for five years effective 1/1/23 to 1/30, excuse me, 12/31/28. We Care Denali shall pay the town $4,250 a month, $51,000 annually for the right to operate the town's facility additionally prior to the 12/31/28 expiration date. We Care Denali shall also replace the current truck weigh scale at the leaf and yard waste facility at no cost to the town. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second. Mr. Baldwin, you reviewed this, obviously?
Yes, Madam First Select Woman, I did.
Is there anything you want to share with the board?
No, not on this matter.
Thank you. Okay, I will have John Cotel here and, John, do you want to speak a little bit to this This is our Assistant Public Works Director. Mr. Cotel.
How are you doing? We Care Denali's been operating the facility for about five years. It was initially a five-year contract with five one-year renewals. They've been performing satisfactory, town benefits from their operation of this facility. It's a wood reduction facility. They have offered to, in lieu of just extending it one year at a time for the next five years, they're willing to make the investment which would normally be the town's cost of purchasing this truck scale approximately $80,000 at no cost to the town.
Thank you, John. Okay, is there any questions, Tom?
Yeah, quick question again on the bid process. Mr. Foley, can you just speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so again, this is Gerald Foley. So what we did is approximately five years ago, we put this project out to bid. At that time, we had, we had four bidders. The bidder that was selected at the time was a company called Harvest New England. In 2019, Harvest New England was acquired by We Care Denali and they basically continued operating up until now. They're continually operating and so the agreement would expire this current month, December 31 of 2023, I'm sorry, 2022. So what we've had, we had an option within our existing agreement to extend the agreement for five years. As John alluded to, the way the agreement is set up is it was structured so that it would be basically one year at a time. And so We Care Denali has approached the town and said, in lieu of giving us single one-year extensions, would the town be willing to offer them one five-year extension? And if we would accept that, what they've agreed to do is provide the town with a weigh scale. The weigh scale is, it's approximately $80,000 in a benefit to the town. So they, in addition to the amount that they pay us, so they pay us $52,000 annually for the right to operate the town's facility. So in addition to that revenue, they've agreed, or they've offered to replace this, the truck weigh scale at no cost to the town.
Right. That actually, I like that idea and I think that's great. Was there any other bidders? Did this go through the normal process? It did, right?
Yeah, so five years ago, we did put it out to bid. So what-
You said that.
Yeah, so what had happened was we did have four companies that bid, but prior, prior to, yeah, prior to this, we were actually paying companies to operate. In other words, we had companies that, in essence, we would pay them and I believe it was, we had companies that were, they were kind of all over the range, but when Harvest New England made their presentation to the town, in essence, they agreed to pay us. So they're basically having the right to operate it and they're paying us revenue. So that was, was the first time this has occurred and we thought it was a good arrangement. They've been a good partner with the town and we thought it would be appropriate to bring it before the board for them to review because we thought it was a good, it was a good offer for the town.
Tom?
This is Jim Baldwin. To answer your question is, this one did not go out to bid because it is a renewal. It was originally in the first five-year contract which expires at the end of this year, there were, the opportunity for five one-year term renewals each year for five years. And in lieu of, in lieu of having the renewal every year, potentially stopping it, you know, after year two or three or what have you, they came back to the town with this suggestion that they would pay for the scale which is needed if the town would just skip that annual renewal portion and go to a new five-year term. And it's my understanding that the original scale was owned by the town and the one that's there now is in disrepair and it would otherwise be the town's responsibility to get a new scale. Gentlemen, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, how much is that scale worth?
Approximately 80,000.
I'm sorry, 80,000?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. And Jim, there's no problem with us doing it this way? It doesn't go across any bid issues or anything like that? Is that correct?
That's why, that's why it's going before the Board of Slackmen.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Is there any comment from the public? Sure, Joe. You have to go up, Jeff, sorry. I know, we're old school around here.
Joe DeVanzo, 1446 Jennings Road. And I'm looking at a contract that is, was renewed annually, looking at a five-year deal. Was there any consideration on inflation built into this contract as far as annually? I see you're using the offset of the scale, but I just question.
The original?
The original contract didn't have an inflationary clause in it. This is part, would be part, well, it's the extension of it, but instead of the one year. So there's no inflationary, just the cost of the scale.
So this is Gerald Foley. So I asked them, I reached out to We Care Denali and I mentioned to them that, you know, that basically they'd been paying the same amount monthly and I said, in addition to the scale, would they be willing to basically afford the town additional revenue? And what they basically came back to me is it said, it's actually costing them more to operate given, you know, the current conditions. So if they were to reconsider that, that they would actually reduce their fee, but they've offered just to keep it the same. And I thought that that was fair.
Thank you, Gerald. If there's no further comment from the public, I'll bring it back to the board. All in favor? Tom? You're on mute, Tom.
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Okay, our next item is item number 10. To hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with One Diversified LLC to provide all labor, materials, equipment and all else necessary for the supply, delivery and installation of smart meeting room technology as detailed in the RFP noted in the agenda in the amount not to exceed 345,000 with the additional authority to execute change orders to said contract in the amount not to exceed 17250 for combined grand total to not to exceed 362250. And these are the ARPA funds. If you remember, this is a capital outlay that we approved and we have Dave Kelly and Nancy here to, from our Board of Ed side, to talk a little bit more about this. Dave, you're up. Dave and Nancy.
Okay, so this is a project to put some smart hybrid meeting technology in four locations in the town and three locations on the Board of Ed side. The locations are this room, the Old Town Hall Conference Room, two rooms at the FIRE Training School, the Board of Education Board Room and two more-
The Fairfield Ludlow High School Lecture Room and the Roger Ludlow Middle School Team Room.
And the purpose of these, of this technology is to make it so that we can have hybrid town meetings so that without having to manually run a WebEx or a Zoom meeting, a Board or Commission Chair will walk in, touch a button on a touchscreen and it'll automatically start the meeting, start the recording and allow the public to join. It's fairly sophisticated technology to try to make a somewhat complicated job of running a meeting manually a bit easier and we're looking forward to getting it installed as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Dave. And, you know, as you recall, not just for the board but for the public who may be listening, you know, we put this through our ARPA funds and it took a lot longer than we had anticipated due to just supply chain issues and having, you know, a lot of meetings. We met and looked at all the rooms, trying to decipher how many meetings we have in town, how many boards and commission, who would be using them. But the hybrid, the hybrid option has been really helpful, as you can see. Two of the board members, well, one of them wasn't available, but a lot of times there's a board member who can't attend a meeting because they're traveling or work or whatever reason and it really has allowed us to continue businesses. Just if you remember, when COVID hit in early 2020, we were faced with having to continue the town business without the ability to sit together. And boy, was that a lot of meetings, trying to figure out how the heck are we going to do this? And we had our budget and we had all these things that were really important to the town and we came up, thank God for Dave Kelly, who worked, I think, I don't know how many hours, literally running every meeting in town for our community so that we can continue the business of the community and no overtime either, which is not really fair. We, we worked really hard and people think you just, you know, order this off the shelf and you get this product, but it's not quite that simple. Takes a lot of time and effort and looking at all these different options and what do we want to do and how do we want to do it and what are the, what are the real things we need? And so it took a considerable amount of time to parse all that out. And I know I sat in a lot of meetings and I know Jackie sat in even more meetings with, with both of you trying to work on this. So I just want to thank you both for your efforts. I know the average citizen does not realize how much time and attention you put into getting this going and it's really going to help our having a better meeting experience. And I think it's been awesome that people can, you know, at least watch these pre-recorded meetings, meetings that typically weren't even recorded in the past because they were maybe meetings that weren't that well-attended. So I think it's going to be good all the way around. Open up to the board?
Yeah, Brenda, I want to second your comments on the efforts that Dave and presumably Nancy was heavily involved on the Board of Ed side did as relates to COVID in the meetings. Dave, you did yeoman's work, first of all, in figuring out a technology that would allow us to do what we did and second of all, having to be at all the meetings and everything, at least virtually. So thank you for that and thank you to you both for bringing this forward. I do have a quick question. From the general public standpoint, if they're sitting at home and watching, listening to this meeting, what can they expect will be different with this new technology versus what they go through now?
The public would join the Zoom meeting like any Zoom participant. They would see the same thing that basically you're seeing right now, except it would be a Zoom screen instead of WebEx.
Would it be better quality audio, better quality video, anything that they can look at or are they going to say, what did we get for this technology?
Well, the, one of the things that's part of a Zoom room is a ceiling-mounted microphone array that should do a better job of picking up everybody in the room without having to deal with pushing buttons and stepping up to microphones and things like that. There'll be at least one display in many of the rooms. It'll be a dual display so that if there's a presentation in the room, the people would see the people on one screen and the presentation on the other. But at home, it would be very much a ordinary Zoom attendance, I would say, but with hopefully a little bit better quality than what you're seeing right now.
There'll be additional cameras in some of the rooms as well, which will give better coverage of both the speakers as well as the board members participating, which I think will enhance the experience.
Yeah, I was going to, Anthony, and by the way, funny enough, I could barely hear you on that, but I guess what you're saying is that the cameras will whatever, follow who's speaking and they won't necessarily always have to go up to the microphone and it'll follow the audience and the general comments that are made there. Is that right?
It's kind of, we learned the hard way is that it's not quite as simplistic as that sounds, but to some degree, yes.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any-
And, one last question, just because I don't have it before me. To Mr. Schmidt, so I see this is coming out of the funds just as we had anticipated. Are we, were we in the ballpark for what we estimated this would cost?
Yes, we actually, you approved 400,000, so we're going to leave what was the amount that was approved.
Thank you, I appreciate that. No other questions, Madam First Select Woman?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Back to the board, all in favor?
Madam First Select Woman, this is, sorry, Jim Baldwin. I did mention earlier, there was one agreement needing some tweak and this happens to be the one, so with your motion, if you would just say, subject to terms approved by the town attorney, they're very minor and very, very standard changes.
Yep. All right, so I'll add-
Madam First Select Woman, I'll make the motion to add the language that we approve this subject to minor modifications that are, to the recommended agreement that are acceptable to the town attorney.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And it was just the amendment, correct?
Correct.
All right, back to the main motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you both.
So this will be up and running by next week, right, guys?
Well, we already have some of the equipment starting to be installed. You see these funky cameras here, high-tech stuff. That's not it? They look new.
Well, they are new.
Where did we get them from? Thank you. Okay, that's, okay, that's right. Thank you, Gerald. Okay, next item is to, can I get a motion to hear and consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Fairfield Fire Chief, resolve that the amended and restated inter-local agreement Fairfield County Hazardous Incident Response Team in the form presented to this meeting and in accordance with the recommendation of the chief of the town Fairfield Fire Department is hereby ratified and approved and further resolved that the chief of the town of Fairfield's Fire Department is authorized to present the inter-local agreement to the first select woman for her approval and signature. And a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Chief?
Good evening, Dennis Parthi, Fire Chief.
Are you on?
I am.
Okay.
This agreement formalizes the regional hazmat team, which has been in existence since the 60s, first as a foam firefighting foam resource consortium and then formalized as the Fairfield County Hazmat Team in 1985. 14 towns from Stratford to Greenwich are involved in this and one of the challenges that we've had is that we are, the major challenge is we're unable to apply for federal grants and there are quite a few grant opportunities available- grants, and there are quite a few grant opportunities available to us. So the establish, establishment of the regional hazmat team under the inter-local governmental agreement statute will allow us to do that, apply for federal grants as well as seek donations from the private industry and engage with non-governmental agencies to support the efforts of the regional hazmat team, all for the benefit of the 14 towns and reducing the cost of operating the regional team. The proposal has been reviewed by the attorney that has been working with us from Bircham and Moses, and has been reviewed by Fairfield Town Attorney Jim Baldwin.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any questions, Tom? Any questions from the board?
Chief, this, this will be, the radios that we recently approved, will that help in this as well because you'll all be on the same system and the like?
Yeah, that will be, and as, as we have discussed with the board, the radio system will allow us better interoperability with our mutual aid partners. All of the agencies that are part of the regional hazmat team will have access to those radio frequencies, so the answer is yes. It will be a significant improvement in our mutual aid response in that we will have better interoperability with all the responders.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got nothing else, Madam First Select Woman.
Very good. Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, our next item is item number 12. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution, whereas the town of Fairfield owns property at 488 Tunxess Hill Road comprising of 0.2902 acres, which is improved with a single-story 8,080, I'm sorry, 9,800 square-foot masonry block building, which has been used by the Department of Public Works for storage? And whereas the town of Fairfield originally acquired the title to said property from the town of Connecticut, from the state of Connecticut in accordance with the Special Act 01-6, which was approved by the Connecticut General Assembly on July 6, 2001, which imposes certain restrictions on town use, whereas the existing building is in very poor condition, precluding such use as necessitating the town's seek bids to demolish the building. And whereas Operation Hope has expressed interest in this property in order for it to relocate its administrative offices, food pantry, and other support operations serving the most vulnerable members of the Fairfield community. And whereas the town of Fairfield is desirous of entertaining a long-term ground lease with Operation Hope to facilitate such use, now, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Selectmen do hereby authorize an administration to purchase the ground lease with Operation Hope to work with the state legislative delegation to seek such changes as necessary to amend the aforementioned special act to facilitate such use. Do we have motion to approve?
Submoved.
So just to give a little background to the board and also to the public who may be listening, we discussed this several times at public meetings and obviously in internal meetings. So the bottom line is, we've had this property on Tunxess Hill. It is a very old building. The roof is, you know, leaking all over. It's got holes, actually, in the roof, and there's, there was some very antiquated old equipment stored there. I went and looked at the building when I first came in to office and toured it. It was, it's, it's, it's not nice, and it's beyond anything that could even be repaired. So what we thought, we weren't sure, there was so much going on at the time, obviously in the town, and we were trying to figure out what we'd do with this building. So it was in our sort of facilities list, among other things, and we thought, okay, well, maybe we'll continue to use it as a storage facility and, and other things, obviously popping up, most notably the fill pile and all of that. And then, and then it occurred to us that we might want to, we had some developers reach out that may want to develop for retail and maybe affordable housing and some other things, and we were entertaining those, and we asked the legislature to, to put together a legislative resolution that would allow us to do that. So they did, which was very great. And then, after that happened, those, I did, those sort of offers went away, and then Operation Hope said, boy, we could love to do that and expand our, have our facility over there. And unfortunately, after going back and forth with the legislature, we could not make what we were trying to do with Operation Hope work under the legislative language that was put in place. So we are hoping that, and, and we have agreement by the legislature to, to bring this up again so that we may use it for a nonprofit, and that's the issue, the nonprofit status. And that's what we're trying to do, and I'll hand it over to Mark. Did I succinctly?
You did.
So before you hand it over, if I might, Madam First Select Woman, Mr. Barnhart was kind enough to walk me through this on the phone the other day, and I want to, I, I'm very happy with the creativity of this. Not only do we get a dilapidated building potentially off the, the town's issue list, but we turn it into an asset for one of our most beloved not-for-profits who's looking for a new home. If we can get this done through the state playing ball with us, I, I think it's a, the proverbial, I hate this expression, but win-win scenario. I, I really do, so I just hope it works out because I think it'd be a good thing for Operation Hope, and I think it'd be a good thing for the town, and I think it'd clean up an ice ore on that property right now.
Agreed. Thank you. And I just want to note that I see Carla Miklos has signed on to the WebEx Director of the Operation Hope. Mark, do you want to add anything? Sounds like we have agreement here.
No, that was a very, very good summary. I don't think I can add anything. Mark Barnhart, for the record, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development, but I'm happy to answer any questions from the board or from the public.
Thank you, Mark. I, I appreciate your comments, Tom. I mean, obviously, this is, you know, sometimes you have to let things bake a little and think them through, and this, you know, I'm glad we didn't move on the other, or the other items didn't work out because this really, I think, if we can get the, all the pieces, puzzle pieces put together, it's going to be a home run for the community and for, for Operation Hope, so. Carla, do you want to comment, or is there anything you'd like to share?
Hi, everyone. I just want to say that, you know, it's a, it's a creative solution to a couple of problems, you know, for the town and for us. And so if everything comes together, I think my board is very excited about moving forward. So, you know, I appreciate Mark and Brenda and everybody's hard work, and I'm looking forward to, if, with your blessing, getting in front of the legislature and having that, you know, small issue corrected so we can move forward.
Thank you, Carla. Is there any comments from the public on this item? Hearing none? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Hope you're doing well.
Take care, Carla.
All right, our next item is item number 13. This is to hear and consider an act upon the request from the WPCA to appropriate $1,750,000 from the WPCA fund balance to finance the repair of the primary digester. Do I have a motion to approve?
Submoved.
I'll second, and I just want to, for the record, share what I put in the newsletter on Friday, so that for public, those members of the public who may not have had the opportunity to read it or aren't signed up for it. Due to the structural failure of one of the primary digestors at the water pollution control facility, there has been a change in how the sewage at the facility is being processed. The broken digester had to be cleaned, which was a large undertaking, so the contractor could then assess the cause and extent of the failure. Based on the scope of the damage, it is expected to take a few more months for the repair to be completed. The change in the process at the facility is causing residents in the area to experience a strong odor. While WPCF hired a company in October to assist in controlling the odor issues, those attempts were ineffective and appeared to have exasperated the smell. The WPCF has now identified a new odor control product, product which arrived today, which was on Friday, and the WPCF is optimistic it will improve the odor in the area. The town has been diligently coordinating with qualified experts and vendors to identify, bid, schedule, and implement the necessary equipment and repairs. Some of our residents raised concern about air quality. The town arranged for air testing by an independent private contractor that took place on Friday, and as soon as the town has the report, we will release those results. In the interim, the WPCF has had several air test meters, which they regularly use for entered, for entering confined spaces to indicate if there are any hazards within the building. Those units had been placed around the facility and did not record any elevated results. The Connecticut Department of Environmental and Energy Protection have been on-site to the location and the state, as our health department has discussed this situation with the residents' concerns, with the staff at the Connecticut Department of Public Health and the Environmental Occupational Health Assessment Program. The Department of Public Health staff has advised that the change would not likely lead to a change in health risk for either infectious diseases or other health impacts from exposure to sewer odors. For infectious disease risk, an individual would have to have direct contact with the sewage, and the WPCF has indicated that the process change is not introducing any new sewage or particulate matter into the environment. Department of Public Health stated that the outdoor, that the odors experienced are likely from sewage-related gases and that they do not contain infectious materials. DPH further explained that they're likely the strong odors from hydrogen sulfide or other components found in sewage, and that these components do not, that they do produce strong odors at very low concentrations. DPH advised that the levels at which these odors are noticeable and objectable are hundreds of times below that would produce health impacts. To confirm that, we have been advised the town sought quotes from an independent private air testing firms. Even assuming the levels found are below those that produce health impacts, we acknowledge that the WPCF process change is causing an increase in odors, and the staff at the department will continue to work to implement strategies to reduce them. And I apologize for having to read all of that, but we obviously have had concerned residents emailing, and we did take the time to gather that information on Friday, to put it in the newsletter, and to share it with residents who reached out to us. So thank you for indulging me on allowing me to share that. I'm going to open it up. We have John Bodie on the line here, and we also have our chair, chairperson and the WPCF with us. And although Selectwoman Lefkowitz could not attend, she did email that she said she's very supportive of this project, and I, and as a member of the commission, she did vote, I believe, to approve this item last week. And I'll hand it over to you, John. First, can I have a motion to approve? I'm sorry, can I have a motion to approve? Tom? Oh, sorry, you're on mute.
Submoved. Did I say something?
Okay. Thank you. Second. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. First of all, I remember, thank you for reading that, Brenda. We talked about this at the last Board of Selectmen meeting as well. It's no surprise that it's coming back to us. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen, as well as the town, is taking this issue seriously. I would like to understand the, the costs of this, how, how those were developed. Was it more than if we would have handled it in a, in a different way sooner? Are we paying kind of a premium penalty for, you know, how bad this had gotten? You know, generally, that, that kind of stuff, because it's clear that from an operational standpoint, we do need to do this. Subsequent to that, I have some comments based on a document that I received earlier from Mr. Davanzo that I think needs to go into the public record. It was sent to me prior to the meeting, and thank you, Mr. Davanzo, but I do want to comment on that document, and it, it's got to be, I think, presented to the entire board too.
Okay. John, do you want to discuss the repair and some of the work that's being done?
The repair is out to bid. The, the, I don't know if we're paying more now than we would have paid back in April or May or June. I think we're probably going to get a better price now that we've got it cleaned out. We approved, the, the WPCA Commission approved $1.75 million, based on information we got from our engineer, who put, put the total between $1.5 and $2 million. We thought that that would be a fair meet-in-the-middle price. We had a pre-bid meeting last week. We had two contractors attend that pre-bid. Those bids will be opened a week from Thursday. We're hoping for, for, for a good competitive bid, and, and, and we hope for a best price.
So why is this, why is 1.7 the right number, then? How comfortable are we? Yeah?
We're as comfortable as we can be. We're, we're, we're flying a little blind and, and with, with costs and, and stuff like that. It's hard to, it's hard to nail it down, but we, we talked to the right people, we think, and we got the right information, and we made our best guess.
Okay. Where's the RFP, and when's it going out?
The bid went out on November 22nd.
Okay. And when are bids due back in?
We're having the bid opening on December 15th.
Okay.
Because of the, because of the odor complaints, we're trying to fast-track this, so when we do get the bid, we have the money in place and we can get going.
Well, if you get the bids on the 15th, I mean, there's enough time to come back to, I mean, we have meetings right around that time, don't we?
I don't know when the next meetings are.
Well, tip it.
Selectman Flynn.
Sure, go ahead. Did you press the button?
Yes, I did.
Sorry, go ahead.
Selectman Flynn, the, we're not worried about the Board of Selectmen. We had to deal with the Board of Finance and the RTM on this, and they would not be meeting again until January. Let me, let me take a, a quick step back and give you some background to the original question. We got a bid, the, the digester, under pressure, blew its 45-ton top off back around Easter time. We went out to bid, and we received one bid for $2.7 million on August, we opened that bid on August 4th. And what we said was, when it was reviewed, it was too much money, and what we also said was, it was too much money because we didn't know how much internal damage. We, we could see the top was blown, and 10 of the 12 bolts were damaged on the, holding it down, but what we couldn't see was the interior damage. So we went forward and asked for a bid, we split the bid in half, basically. We went for a bid to clean the digester, and that bid, that bid was accepted and was, the cleaning was finished just before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I believe, for $530.
How much was that one again?
For $531,000. The bid was, the, what we went out to bid was, was up to 630. We had a contingency in there. It came in, final figure was 531, $531,000. What that also enabled us to do is enabled us to see, to get inside the cleaned-out digester, and we now have a bid out, and I'll talk about this bid, but there are four components to the bid. To one, remove the damaged lining. We're not going to replace it. It doesn't need to be replaced. Fix the internal pipes. Those two items were not known to us when we got that $2.7 million bid, so that's why we think that one was high. We can now look at inside the digester. The next thing that happened was, we also want to replace the pressure gauges and valves up on top, and again, replace those 10 bolts that hold the top in place. So we are also doing one more thing here, Tom. We are trying to make, change the process a little bit by coming to the Board of Selectmen with this number, and, and when we approved it last Tuesday at our special meeting, we approved up to $1.75 million. And when we approved it last Tuesday at our special meeting, we approved up to $1.75 million. We are hoping for multiple bids now that the bidders can get inside and see what the actual damage is. I've, I have a feeling it's going to come in at $1 to $1.5 million, but we don't want to have to come back to the Board and slow down the process. Or actually change the process. Normally, we'd wait for the bids to be open on December 15th. We'd get the bid we wanted and then come to your Board with it, and then go to the Board of Finance and the RTM. However, that would take us into the end of January, the way the schedules are right now.
Just a couple of things on that. Just a couple of points of note. First one is, are you going to have the bids back before you go, before the Board of Finance?
The Board of Finance is tomorrow night.
No, the Board of Finance is tomorrow evening, Tom.
And we've requested the RTM take this up on a special, before their committee meetings on Monday because of the urgency of this situation and the impact it's having on this area.
I get it. I was just wondering whether, because in our last meeting, the first selectwoman had asked both those bodies. She said publicly she was going to ask both of them to be amenable to special meetings on this, right? I think you might have a hard time getting through all the bodies, maybe I'm wrong, before the final bids are received. You do make a compelling case as regards kind of your, you know, the $2.7 million. You came down $500,000, right? You already spent that. You're down at $2.2. You found out that, you know, the process doesn't be as involved, doesn't have to be as involved as it might have been, so I get the context for it. I just wonder whether you should wait to bring it before those bodies until right after you get the bid, which might be, you know, very quickly, but that's not for me to determine, right?
So, well, first, can I ask everyone who's not interacting in the meeting to mute their phones? I'm hearing some background noise. Please. All right, so, you know, Tom, obviously, this is not the first time that the town has, you know, put a funding request before the RFPs were back. And we have a real urgent situation, and the Board of Finance has agreed to take this up tomorrow night because of the urgency of this matter and the RTM as well. We can't really, I don't, I don't think they're going to hold it up because this is an urgent matter. We have to handle this, and it's an emergency. So I think you were right, Joe, into asking for a little bit more, you know, not to have to come back and play the whole roulette wheel of the town boards. I mean, obviously.
That was our intent.
Right. It's a smart thing to do, and it's the way we should do it.
Let me ask, let me offer one more piece of information to Tom, which is a little non-sequitur, but we did receive net $948,000 in insurance proceeds that will go against this $1,750, plus the $531, however you want to handle it. And we are asking the adjuster to come back now that we have the digester cleaned out to see if we can put another claim in for additional funding.
I was going to ask that. I saw that on a schedule that you had provided, so thank you for that.
Is there any additional questions from the Board?
I do on this, but let me, so Mr. Davanzo was kind enough to send me some financial projections that I want to make sure are shared with our entire body. Obviously, as you correctly point out, and I'm getting that background noise, too.
Yeah, can you mute whoever that is?
Okay. It's concerning in the out years over the WPCA, and I think we need to have further conversations because it does show that the fund balance will be used up over the next couple of years with projects. It also shows a significant amount of bonding that is required over the next five years or so. Now, to be clear, some of that was very well-known because of the rebuild that's required down there, but some of it, I think, will probably be a little bit of a surprise as to the amount needed by the WPCA. And I think it requires, Madam First Selectwoman, I know you put together a subgroup to work on capital project planning, and I think they need to see this schedule. And it goes directly to why I asked the questions I asked in our last meeting regarding the WPCA. And, you know, this is an emergency situation. The citizens can't live with this smell and the things like that, and I applaud us, the town handling this as quickly as we possibly can. But I do think we need to have a broader discussion over the WPCA and their capital outlay needs over the next number of years. And I think the schedule was pretty well what I was looking for and not what I wanted to see, to be honest with you.
Right. And you're right. I have a capital working group that has two members of the Board of Finance and two members of the RTM with the philosophy of having a more collaborative process and having each of those members going back and updating their boards along the way instead of just one workshop a year as opposed to getting into this over a longer period of time. The WPCA projects are not a secret. They've been around a long time. Most people who've been in local government on any board know we have these projects coming. I've asked the WPCF to come and do a whole presentation for the working group, and I'm happy to share that with all elected officials because they're all taped and easily accessible to anyone who's interested, elected officials and the public. Yes, we have a lot of projects, and we have a lot coming down at us. And, I mean, I don't know how we get around it. It is what it is. We have to do these things. But this, obviously, is an emergency situation, and we cannot not do it. It has to be done. So how that floats out in our working group and how we set the one-year, next year's capital plan, and then how we set the five-year that goes right after that, the draft of that, obviously, things move around here and there. They always have. But how those things all break out will be determined, well, we'll get collaboration from the working group. There's no votes, but it is a collaborative process, and hopefully, the people I've appointed are sharing that information with their respective groups. And I've encouraged elected officials who have to vote on items to pay attention to these and watch them, or even sign on during them if they're interested. But again, we just have a lot of projects. I mean, I don't know how we get around that.
Right. And just let me reiterate, this is not, this particular maintenance item is not a capital item. I know you know that, Tom.
Right, right.
But it's a big number, and it'll come out of our fund.
But it's paid for out of.
Out of our fund.
It's paid for out of the same funding mechanism because it's such a large number.
Right.
Right. And it's, and again, this was, to see this rolled out over a five-year projection and to see the amount of bonding, in my opinion, that was a bit new information. Now, to your point, the timing is a bit different, right? Or can be adjusted. But literally on this schedule, it shows, you know, $89 million worth of prospective bonding over the course of a five-year period.
That is correct. That's the reason we put it together, so that everybody can see it in front of them and we could.
Where's, somebody tell him he's muted.
Tom, you're on mute, Tom. Bless you. Tom, can you hear us, Tom? Tom, can you hear us? We can't hear you at all.
Is the phone still on?
I don't know. Yeah, it's green.
Is Jared speaking?
No, no one's speaking. No, we didn't lose him. We just couldn't hear him. He's still on the screen. Just can't hear him. So I'll just say that, again, these projects are well-known and have been well-known by all elected officials. I mean, people, Tom actually mentioned it to me when we first got elected. He couldn't believe the amount of projects that are on the WPCF list. And we do, there's a lot of projects. But obviously, this is an emergency, and we're going to have these discussions about the long-range plan of all the projects in town, Board of Ed, WPCF, town projects, and then try to prioritize them to the best of our ability, knowing that we'll always have emergencies come up that we're going to have to manage and handle. Can everyone else hear on, can someone else speak? Because I don't know if it's just Tom's thing or if it's anybody else's. Yeah, John, John.
I see John moving, though.
You see John moving? He doesn't look like he's moving. Oh, he's moving. John, can you hear us? Can every, no, nobody can hear us.
No.
Oh, no. It's green.
Don't touch him.
Maybe when you muted John, it did something? I don't know. Unmute him.
He is unmuted, I think.
Good thing you approved that other equipment.
Yeah.
Can you mute and unmute and see what happens?
Jerry, do something.
Can you, can you text Jared and see if he can hear us? Or if he can say something? I mean, he must be able to hear me, though, if I'm talking.
I don't know. Can you hear us? Oh, not yet. All right, no, he can't. So, all right. One vote. Almost. I got a vote on this. All right, Jerry, we're trying to reboot the system. No, they're going to reboot, I think. I don't know. Hold on. All right, bye.
Welcome to WebEx. Enter your attendee ID number, followed by pound. If you do not know.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Why did that happen, guys? I mean, does that just goes offline? Oh. Well, it's a good thing we're getting that equipment. Okay. All right. All right, so we're back to the Board. If there's no further discussion on this item, can we, I would like to call a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Does John?
I saw him say aye.
You did?
Yeah, he put his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I thought we were having another problem. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
I'm unmuted, so.
Yeah, there was some, no, nobody could hear us. There was something wrong with the system.
Yeah.
Before. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Okay. And the Board of Finance is taking that item up tomorrow, and RTM is taking it up on Monday before their committee meeting, so. Get through this. All right, next item. Item number 14. Can I get a motion to consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $76,795.53? Tom, motion?
Yeah. Second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And I would just like to, for the record, say that I was able to attend the Stix and Soldiers lacrosse game on Saturday after Thanksgiving. I know Selectman Flynn attended last year on my behalf, and I just want to express my sincere gratitude. It was really lovely to be there and see the work that they're doing, especially the assistance for our wounded soldiers in promoting youth awareness for our military service. I was proud that our town assistant Fire Chief George Gamola was selected to be the keynote speaker, and to meet the honoree, former Marine Brandon Laird and his wife Jody was really, really special. They were very grateful, and, I mean, what a lovely thing that Bob Vitale and the whole organization puts together. It was really lovely to be there. It makes you realize what's important. So I would just like to note that due to the inclement weather on Saturday, we had to postpone our new tree lighting, which we were really excited about, having a whole new fun thing to do, and of course, it rained on our parade. So we're pushing it to, and it's supposed to rain on and off during the week, so unfortunately, we pushed it to this coming weekend coming up. Although I did ask Anthony to light the tree in the interim because I think it would have been a little unfestive not to have the tree lit for all that time, so it's lit up, but we will shut it off on Saturday morning and relight it on Saturday night. I want to highlight that the town's holiday shop and stroll is this Thursday evening, and it's such a fun tradition. If you haven't tried it, it's a lot of fun. There's a lot of stores that participate. Each of them serve a little holiday cocktails at each of the stores, which makes it more fun. And there's a lot of good deals, and it really kicks off the shopping holiday, and it's a fun time to spend with community, and everybody's walking the streets, and there's music, and lots of fun things planned by our amazing Economic Development Department and the Chamber. So I hope that people will take the time to shop local and support our local mom and pops for the upcoming holiday. And that's all I have. Any, any, do you have anything, Tom, you want to?
No, I'm, no, that's it. Thank you so much. I would say it was nice to see that one of Fairfield University's own was involved in the World Cup and played tremendously well.
I did see that.
The university, and should be proud of that.
Yeah, that's really nice. Thank you for bringing that up. It's exciting. It was fun watching that game.
Yes. It was. Not so much the last one, but the other one.
Well, yeah. All right, well, if there's no further business, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye. Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.